All right, good evening, members of Jupiter First Church. I feel like I'm in a Pope Mobile here, so I don't know how you feel on Sunday mornings. Okay, I want to introduce myself for those of you who haven't met me. My name is Rich DeLucia. I've been a member here for about 10, 12 years. My wife's family's been a member here since the beginning back at what's now Jupiter Beach Resort. And I've been on council, I'm the Chair of your council. Been on council now for a little bit over two years, and I was elected Chair of Council for about, for over the past 12 months. And so, part of this idea, we're having a congregational town hall informational meeting. We're having our annual meeting on Sunday. This is kind of like a preliminary one. If anybody has any questions, we're going to, the whole idea of 2021 is for us to be transparent. We want to answer all your questions, so we had questions sent in. So, we decided to have an informational town hall meeting, and that's what the meeting is here tonight. We have quite a good people here in person and another large amount online also. So first thing I want to do is go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we'll start off with the meeting with Pastor Chip giving the prayers.
Let us pray. Lord, we love you, and we thank you for the love that you have shown us in your Son, Jesus. And we thank you that through Jesus, who you raised from the dead, you have made us into your people, and you have given us your Holy Spirit that empowers us to know you and to serve you and to love you. We thank you for gathering us together in this family that we call Jupiter First Church. And we thank you for the faithfulness that you have shown to us throughout the years in this place. We ask for the wisdom and guidance and power of your Spirit as we move forward into what you have called us to do. We thank you for all the ways that you have been with us through the years, and we know that you will be with us in the years to come. We thank you that the best years are not behind us, but ahead of us. Give us wisdom, guidance, humility, and discernment as we move into what you have waiting for us. We lift up all of these prayers in the power of your Holy Spirit and in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
So, on the agenda, tonight, there really is no agenda. We don't have anything planned. It's basically a question and answer session. So, as questions come up, Teres, our Director of Operations, will kind of forward them to, and we have a panel. Jim Larkins on council, and he's actually the Chair of the Nominating Committee. So, he's been very busy the last three months or so. And I think you guys know Pastor Chip, and I've been, I sit on council for now two years. So, question and answer. The first question that's on the foremost of all of our minds is council 2020 and the resignation of our former pastor, Kevin. So, I wanted to go ahead and talk to you about last year first. Last year, the council, if James Brown was the hardest working man in show business, our church council was the hardest working congregants in the church business, no doubt about it. We had so many hours, he put a lot in, every one of us, our first thought was for Jupiter First Church. So, I'm going to kind of give you a little background of what transpired last year and what led up, I'm going to be open as much as possible, which will probably answer a lot of your questions, and we'll start off with that, and then we have other questions related to UCC and everything too. So, last year, I got up on the podium before I spoke, and you see all our emails that I've sent out. And again, being as transparent as possible, you'll see our minutes. I do like little mini minutes. So, we meet the third Tuesday of every month, and within a few days, I type up mini minutes, send them out to you guys, so you know exactly what our church is about. Our church, we have our ministers, we have Pastor Chip, David and Marty, the Director of the Children's Ministries. We have the staff, which Teres is the Director of Operations, and Susie Smith, and quite a few other people that work there. And then council, we're all volunteers. We meet once a month, but I guarantee you, we're in communication with each other at least several times a week, and last year was pretty much every day. So, last year started, in February, I got selected to be Chair of your council, and I said, "Well, can't be that hard." Everything was done, right? We got through the bylaws the year before. We had meetings. Stan did a wonderful job at our church, and I said, "This won't be that bad." Within three weeks, COVID hit, and we had to cancel all of the services. So, that was the first thing. And then throughout, we had some budget cuts because of financial restraints. So, fast forwarding to what happened, roughly about, with Pastor Kevin's on there, Nancy Reed is our treasurer, and then we have nine council members on council. So, fast forward through about September, council was presented with a whistleblower, and I was given permission by the names of the whistleblower. So, Pastor David, our Minister of Music, presented a whistleblower letter to one of the members of council. And then the council, just reading, the concern of the whistleblower letter stated that he was concerned about abuse of power, including harassment, intimidation, coercion, and slander from our senior minister, Pastor Kevin at the time. And that was in the letter, that was presented to council. And the council, we immediately needed, met together, tried to figure out the next step to do. We put together, we met with our church's attorney council and came up with a plan. We met, and the decision was, we needed to do an investigation. This whistleblower has a big name, it's potentially legal. We wanted to do what's right for our staff, for our ministers. So, we, several members interviewed a group of attorneys. We ended up meeting and hiring a Reverend, he's over in Tampa. He is an attorney, but he's also a Reverend. So, we hired him to look into the case. He interviewed David, he interviewed Pastor Kevin, and then within a few weeks, came up with a conclusion. And the conclusion was that there was no legal merit for a legal case of a whistleblower. There was some concerns. The council, a majority of the council said, "Well, that wasn't enough information." And within a few days, we were, the council received another letter that was not a whistleblower complaint, but of some more complaints. And Pastor Chip came forward with that letter. We read it, "Well, this goes a little bit deeper." The Reverend Attorney that we had hired, we said, "He's already halfway there." He decide, we decided to reuse him, rehire him to kind of go in deeper. And at that point, he went in deeper, and he interviewed multiple church members, staff, former members, a total of about 12 or 13 people were interviewed. After about a month, we're getting around Thanksgiving, that letter came back, the result came back to that, to the council. We met promptly right before Thanksgiving, and 38 pages of investigation. That investigation is, is under lock and key, because it does include a lot of people here. We did that under a non-disclosure agreement, because a lot of the people still work here, and we didn't want any problems in the workplace, any further problems in the workplace. So, again, that came back as, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm going to do the best I can to state it, that there was not a legal merit, but there was some other concerns that were expressed. So, the, over the next few weeks, we had powwows. We had powwows of what do we do next? Is there a concern? Some of us individually spoke with staff, former staff, and then we all met right there in the North X with the ministers, all the councils. And at that point, we want, again, as council members, we wanted to do what we felt was best for the church. So, the end result after the meeting, it was determined Pastor Kevin would resign from our church effective December 31st. That was his last day for, for his administrative duties. So, I know there's a lot more behind it, but that's basically, in a nutshell, what happened. We were, wanted to see a different direction of the church, and again, it was a supermajority in the council that decided to do that. Not everybody's happy, some people are, but that was the end result. And fast forward to January, that's where we're at now. And currently, council, we are looking, Pastor Chip has been doing a wonderful job preaching. He stepped in, and as we talk about interim minister, our first discussion is, do we hire a senior minister? And at this point, we decided to look into hiring an interim minister. An interim minister to give those involved, Pastor Chip, David, any other staff members that were hurt, all of us went through, it was traumatic. I tell you what, we spent so much time, I missed a lot of my family, it was, it was tough. You're dealing with friends on the same topic. We're all here to do the same worshiping, and it was tough on all of us. So, we figured, and Pastor Chip especially, thought it'd be a good time to have an interim minister. Let him step back a little bit, and that's where we are at now. Down the road, once the enters, and I know people said, "Just hire a senior minister, just get someone now, we don't need an interim," but we rely on the people that are here every day, and they feel an interim minister is going to be the best thing for right now. So, we have a search committee, we're meeting on Sunday, and at that point, hopefully within the next month to two months, we'll have an interim minister. And then down the road, we can decide how to go. Do we look for, maybe not a senior minister, maybe a group of, like a committee of ministers, including Pastor Chip? That's all going to be discussed as we kind of go into that. That's that answer in a nutshell. And some of that is under lock and key to protect people that were investigated for Pastor Kevin, but that's where we are now. So, moving forward, since another question, I'll kind of skip ahead to UCC. So, that'll be coming up. So, United Church of Christ, Jupiter First was founded years ago, 1980s, thanks to Lynn there, as a united, as a UCC church. The UCC helped to build this building, they provided a loan for the building, and we've been members, it's been a united UCC church up until roughly about 2016, when some point at that point, we were no longer part of the UCC. We did okay, completely independent. UCC is one denomination. It's really the only, if someone asked, "Are we looking at other denominations?" I brought that up at the council meeting, decided because Jupiter First Church, and if you remember, I think it used to be Jupiter United First Church? Okay. My memory's already gone from that, but, so, did we look at a denomination? We talked about it, we decided because Jupiter First Church was started as a UCC church, it would be good to still only choose a UCC church. So, we've been meeting, and we're going to, and Reverend John Vertigan, who's the Florida Division, will be presenting on Sunday's annual meeting there. So, more to follow on that. There's quite a bit of UCC questions, I'll do the best I can to answer the simple ones, but I think I'll defer most of the main UCC questions to the Reverend John Vertigan on Sunday there. So, we're going to be, and why UCC? Why now? Well, all of us on council, we're laypeople. We're not attorneys. One is, but we're not, we don't have a lot of information. We have some information on church, but having someone behind you that has human resources, that has ministers at your disposal, that has youth directors at your disposal, we thought we could have had a much easier year last year with the backing of a big denomination like that. So, this was talked about even a year ago, before all, everything happened last year. But going forward with the UCC, pretty much unanimously, the council has agreed, we were going to investigate the possibility of joining, and we've been in touch with the Reverend, and again, he's going to present it to congregation. There will not be a vote on Sunday, it's just an informational session. If, if we do decide to go forward with that, as it's a congregational vote, then we'll have another special meeting down the road to have that congregational vote. Okay. So, that's my big questions on, my big response to questions on Pastor Kevin, and then the UCC. So, if you, if, now, if we can start off with either, and now, question and answer, we have preset questions that were delivered to us by April 1st, the deadline, and there's going to be an online question, and we're going to have, anybody here can certainly raise their hand. So, do we want to start off?
The first preset, online question, it says, "Why were other denominations not even considered? Is there something about the UCC that is much more attractive than other denominations?" Can you repeat that in my?
Okay. Okay, I can, I can repeat it.
Oh, go ahead.
So, the question online was, if you can read it again.
Why were other denominations not even considered? Is there something about the UCC that is much more attractive than other denominations?
Okay. So, the question was, "Why was only the UCC investigated and not other denominations? Was there something more attractive about the UCC? Why we didn't look into that?" Well, that question, I'm not probably the best course, question to answer that. When we, when we met as a council, I proposed that question, and again, it's because this church is a UCC church from the beginning. UCC helped to build, helped us build this, and to the best of my knowledge, that's why we decided to only investigate the UCC, because this church was founded by the UCC. It was a UCC church. It did good to us, and, and we figured we just kind of, even though there was a little gap, we weren't part of the UCC, decided to move forward with the same denomination it was originally.
So, the follow-up question. It says, "Well, we left the UCC for a reason, so I don't understand why we would consider other options."
Okay. Do you have any answers for that? No? Okay.
The follow-up question was, "But we left the UCC for a reason. I do not understand why we are not pursuing other options." Fair question. We are seriously considering the UCC, and it's, well, it's not the Bachelor. We are not going to date a bunch of other denominations until we've made a decision that this one's a fit or is not a fit. It's not fair or respectful to this denomination that was, was planted by Lynn and Ned, not denomination, but this church was planted as a UCC church. It matches our history, our heritage, and our DNA. So, right now, it's appropriate for us to seriously look and hear what the UCC has to say. Again, they, they planted us, and we owe them that honor to seriously investigate this denomination. And then, if for some reason, we determine that it's not a fit, we can investigate other possibilities.
But Lynn, did you have, Lynn had something to say? She knows something about UCC.
I think she does. Better put this on.
Well, I would say that what we're planning is about eight weeks of introduction, so that there will be lots of time for questions. So, it's not something that council just decided, "This is what we're going to do." It is something that will be investigated. We've talked with John Vertigan a couple of different times, just to talk to him. He's very open. He is the conference minister, and, you know, it's, I don't know why we would investigate any other denomination. We left in 2016, and what is that, five years ago? And ever, from the very beginning until five years ago, we have been a UCC church. A lot of people don't know really what that means. So, what is planned in the next eight weeks is that all the questions that you have, everything about the UCC, will be investigated and really talked about. It's an interesting thing, when a church is planted, you know, it's, it's not like, well, I don't know, when you all, when you joined the church, did you investigate whether it was UCC, or Episcopalion, or Methodist, or whatever?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good. I am glad. I mean, I was raised in a UCC church. Ned went to a UCC seminary at Yale, so the roots are deep. This church was started to be inclusive for everyone, you know, no matter race or economics, sexual orientation. The UCC is, I don't know, it's the epitome of what this church has always been. So, I don't, I don't know why we would investigate any other denomination.
I think, I think that part of the question was, there must have been a reason why you left the UCC in the first place. I don't think there was a reason, so maybe you can address that, because it's like, are you more in good faith anymore? Nobody understood why we pulled out in the first place.
It's, I think.
Repeat the question.
Oh, the question.
There's another one, I'll question basically what she said, and that is, "Why did Pastor Barry try to leave the UCC?"
What's the question?
Why did Pastor Barry?
That's a little.
That's, I'm, I'm not able to speak to Barry's reasons for it, but I have spoken to Barry since that time, and Barry has, has told me that he felt that leaving the denomination was a mistake. And he told me that he felt that really the best thing for this church would be to rejoin the denomination. So, in my communications with Barry, Barry supports us returning to the denomination.
Will the congregation be able to give input on potential joining the UCC?
Oh, yeah. This is a UCC church, which means there will be a congregational vote. There was no congregational vote when we left. It was just stated.
Were you appreciating that? People would not agree with that.
There was no vote when we left the UCC. There was no congregational vote. There was no presentation. I didn't know. I had no idea. So, but we will, to, to join again, there will be a vote. Everyone that's a pledging member will have an opportunity to decide yes or no.
So, Lynn, there was no device or reason why we left the UCC? No obvious reason to depart from the UCC? That makes you concerned there, that people want to know. Is there any singular reason that we left the denomination that we were having confidence in that much of a case?
You know, we, we talked to John Vertigan about this, and because some of it is, you know, again, we get into these, you know, what is confidential and what is not. At the annual meeting, as best as he can, Reverend Vertigan will explain what happened and why the church left. I'm kind of over a barrel here. I mean, I know a lot, but I am not privileged to share some of that information. I can tell you that there's a binder about three and a half inches thick about what was going on, but I think I'll leave it to John Vertigan, and he will speak to us, you know, at our meeting on Sunday. And he will be here after that as well.
Well, you said it wasn't a congregational decision. No one else had input, right? It was all the various?
No, no, there was council. Council decided. But, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm a, I'm a UCC person from the time I was born. Those kinds of decisions were always voted on by congregation, but that one was not. It was not. David and Deb didn't even know that they left the UCC until they went to a, a meeting with John Vertigan, and he said, "Oh, my gosh, you guys are no longer a member of the conference." And they're like, "Oh, did not know that."
Thank you, Lynn.
Was there another question over here?
No, she answered it. The fact that there was no vote. Believe me.
Okay, as Rich said, there were a handful of questions that were submitted ahead of time. I've got a few of them still open here, and then there'll be some coming in live, I'll call it. So, let's go to, I'll say an easy one, okay? Have you considered renting the old church building to a charter school or something, something similar? I, I don't remember us talking that specifically in council meetings, do you, Rich?
Liability, reason for liability, you chose not to do that.
Right. So, liability was the prime item, if you will, and the fact that we're in the COVID scenario that we're in, we've even had some folks approach us to say, "Hey, can we rent out that for, I don't know, some, some type of gathering or some type of event?" And again, back to the responsibility, liability thing, we just thought, "Yeah, it doesn't make sense at this point." Okay, anybody have any questions beyond that for that particular? Yes?
My question was, in looking at the UCC and talking about maybe a team approach versus one senior pastor having power and authority over the bylaws and what direction we take at the council, will the UCC look favorably in your investigation as a council on a chain of command that has more checks and balances than our authoritative senior ministers?
Right. And some of those questions, we've had already answered, and I'll, I'll try to answer them now. The way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody that knows otherwise, is when you look at potentially joining UCC, they're not going to quote, "Govern us" and say, "Here, you go there and you go there." It'll be more of a, "Okay, this, this group or this church could have a senior minister." We could not, meaning we may not, okay? And that was one of the things that really came up from the bylaws, that as a council, as the months and the year progressed, we realized that, you know what, maybe, maybe we are better off not having someone at that, you know, at the very top saying, "This shall be this way." I think we almost set ourselves up to some degree to have a failure for that. So, that, that's my opinion. If someone else wants to contradict that, go ahead.
Not contradict, just, just expand. The United Church of Christ is a congregationalist denomination, which means they are not going to dictate the practices that we're going to follow in our particular congregation. But what they are able to do is connect us with a network of churches and, and inform us of best practices that work in different churches, and allow us to draw from greater wisdom than just our own wisdom. So, there is a vast array of resources that become available to us as we, as we write our new bylaws, as we figure out how we move forward and what leadership structure we're going to have, but they're not going to dictate what structure we take. Now, they might say, "This doesn't look like best practices," but we'd be free to make a bad decision, because it's a congregationalist denomination. So, we will still, we would still be governed by the congregation, we would just have resources at hand to make better decisions moving forward.
And I'll augment that in that, as, as Rich and I and the other council members went through the past year, often we said to ourselves, "We need guidance. We're not professionals." Yeah, yeah, we had, say, somebody that was in, I'll say, a doctor, another person that's an engineer, another person that's a lawyer, et cetera. But we weren't fit to do what we had to do, and I, I want everyone to understand that we did our best. Yes, sir?
Well, what they organize, my understanding is, the United Church of Christ, the initial organization is an association based on the UCC. And then this ministry represents the conference, and above the conference of the Senate. So, we have the association, the people that have similar issues. But here we're, the government, the black guy, the local, the cops.
Agreed, yes. Right.
But the individual church, the communities.
Yep, I can give an example. So, what, he just described is the local church, then the conference, which John Vertigan is the member of Florida Conference, and then above that is Board of Homeland Securities, which is the UCC national, really, the world headquarters, and that's in Cleveland. And to kind of give you an idea of how our roots are in all of this, my mom worked for the National Board in Cleveland. So, this is deep in our roots, which I think is a beautiful thing. So, that's just an example to kind of give you, you know, how we're aligned. If you've taken any of my mom's classes, you know, many people have said they resonate with her, and resonate with, with her spirit and with her theology, and, and that's because, you know, our DNA is UCC, and anyway.
And anyway, that gives you an example as to the hierarchy and where many of us have been over the years, or some of us.
And to add on that, I'll mention, and I want to make sure everybody hears this properly, there has been no decision to go forward with. What we are doing is a quote investigation as to what we want to do. Now, most of us will think that at the end of that, it'll be thumbs up, we go. But again, we can't emphasize too much here that it will be a congregational decision. But it's, in my mind, it's a horse race. And right now, we have one horse in the race. We may add a second. We don't want to do, you know, a bachelor, as you said it. We don't want to have 12 people with roses. No, we don't want to do that. But on the other hand, we want to be open-minded. And right now, there's one horse in the race, but there's no decision. Please, tell your friends, you know, everyone, that no decision's been made and that we, as a congregation, we're going to hear from John Sunday, right? Okay, so he'll be here to answer much better than we can a lot of the questions that we have. And I'm sure you'll feel much better after that. Again, we're not only trying to give you information, but also being open to you to let you know that we're not making decisions. And, you know, we're not going to have, I'll say, what happened before where no vote was taken. That just didn't work out right. Okay, let me go to maybe another sort of easy one. I don't know if Marta is here somewhere. Okay, maybe you can answer this. There is a question that says, what are the plans for the children's ministry and the youth ministry? So come on up, Marta.
All right, so just as we have had to make modifications with everything that we do, we are trying to navigate children's ministry in a COVID world the safest way possible. So one of the things that we have not brought back yet is children's ministry programming for our babies and toddlers. Part of it is just to keep them safe. They are not able to wear masks. And so it protects the children, it protects our volunteer team. But we have started a storytime that is for parents of kids that fall into that early childhood age group so that they are able to come and have ministry with their parents. We do it outside, so we're able to offer something to that age group. Now, if we look over to the preschool and elementary age group, we're actually returning to the roots of how children's ministry functioned in this church from the beginning. When I came to this church, the only way I knew that it operated was that children were always in faith hall. We were kind of on our own island. And probably some of you never even met me if you didn't have young children or you were not involved serving in children's ministry. So I'm thankful I've gotten to know a lot of you over the last several months since we have been together. But we really believe that there is a high value in bringing the best of intergenerational ministry and developmentally appropriate ministry. Basically, layman's terms, intergenerational means that the whole church family is together. If our children are not over here in this room with this group of people, babies all the way through, you know, we have people in their hundreds, if they're not all together, they will never see worshiping in this space as coming to church. They will never see people that are sitting in these seats as their church family. So we have moved away from always keeping the kids over in faith hall because we want our children to know that this is their church home. That, doing everything age segregated, we have learned a lot along the way. And this was something that actually Pastor Kevin and I were already having lots of conversations about several years ago, that we wanted to shift in this direction. And reopening after COVID really gave us the opportunity to do it and try out some different things. So you will see some changes. Obviously, you've already seen that kids have a much greater presence here on Sunday mornings. But we're also going to try to modify how we do our sermons, allow kids to serve our church family. Because if they are members of our family, we will let them participate like the other adult and teenage members of our church family. And if you were with us on Sunday morning or watching online, you probably felt so warm in your heart and soul. That's kind of what we're aiming for, is something where our children will really feel like this is their church family, where they can gain something meaningful. And when they grow up, when they become teenagers, when they move into adulthood, they will continue to remain involved in a church family, whether it's here or they go off to college or the workforce and they move someplace else. We want them to build lifelong faith formation, and we want it to start right here. We are going to continue to provide the best of our developmentally appropriate ministry as well because sitting for 20 minutes for a sermon is really hard. Sometimes it's hard for even us as adults. So we are doing children's church right now. That's what our developmentally appropriate ministry practices are, where during the sermon portion of most of our Sunday mornings, we take our three-year-olds through fifth graders over to the pavilion, and we are offering them a lesson. Now, the beautiful thing is because we have started to transition to this team ministry model, is that David Chip and I are working hand in hand every single week to make sure that everything that happens on Sunday morning, we are all driving home to the same place. So when it comes to the scriptures that we are teaching, you guys are hearing a sermon, that's the same text that our children are hearing. So we're enabling our parents to be able to have more conversations with their children. All of these things are things that are kind of new, but they're really not. This is a lot of what this church used to do for years and years. And we just wanted to bring back the very best that we can. As we keep moving forward and, you know, herd immunity starts to be more increased and we're able to provide more, certainly we will bring back ministry programming for our babies and toddlers. We just want to keep them safe right now, and we want to keep our volunteer teams safe as well. Any questions? So we are not going to have a full hour on Sunday mornings of kids always remaining in faith hall. We are moving back to what this church used to do, where there was a portion of time where kids were over here. And then there is a portion of time where the kids are having their separate age and developmentally appropriate programming. So it's really just moving back to what you guys were doing, I want to say maybe four and a half to five years ago. I've only been here three years. And this is shifting back to what was done in the past. Well, we have a really great team. Thank you. We love working together, and we think that we can do better ministry when in the staff level and the ministers level, and then bleeding down everywhere in this church family when we're doing it together. As Jesus said, He is the vine and we are the branches. And when we willingly lob off branches, we are cutting up our church family. And so part of that is restoring our ministry team and our staff and our council to working together. But it's also bringing our children and our teenagers back into our church family, grafting them in so that they can be healthy and strong. And now Chip's going to talk about youth.
I am going to talk about youth. Before I came here to Jupiter First Church, I served as a campus minister at Emory University for 15 years. And I saw and worked with kids who were done with church. But many of them were done with church because they never encountered church. From the time that they were little, they were pushed away from the rest of the church and put in special age-appropriate, and limited to age segregated ministry. And as a result, when they get to college, all they've heard of the gospel is stuff that was taught to them at about a fifth grade level. And so they, in their minds, so many of them, and especially at a university like Emory, they thought that the gospel was baby stuff. But what's interesting is when we're young and when we're little and we hear something that we don't fully understand, it doesn't go in one ear and out the other. It goes in one ear and we sort of wonder, what is that? What is that idea that I've heard? What does it mean that God loves me in this way? What does it mean that there's a trinity? I don't understand that word. And then you grow and you learn more things. And suddenly, as you grow, you have these aha experiences where the knowledge and the context that you've gained in life meets that idea that has been stewing in your head for all of those years. But if we look at the way the church is performing in North America and look at people in their 20s and their 30s and their 40s, the numbers of these people who are active in churches, this is no secret, it's very low. And I would suggest to you that the models that we have been using to raise our children in the Christian faith are not working. When they get into college, they want to find something with only people who are their own age. They want to find a church that is like a youth group. But the body of Christ is made up of many members of people of all generations. And the idea is that we must graft our children into a family of faith. They need to recognize that a church is a multi-generational thing. And guess what? Those of us who are older, they need the wisdom, not the wisdom, the, well, yes, the wisdom of children, the wonder of children, the enthusiasm of children. And the ones who are younger benefit from having a group of family around them where they say, this is my church, and it's not just the younger people, it's the older people too. So this is sort of a philosophical level as to why we are doing it, philosophical and theological, why we are trying to graft the kids into it. They're not the future of our church. They are our church, and they must be connected to it. Now, what are we doing about youth? Right now, we are looking for a part-time interim youth director, someone who will help coordinate the activities and the lessons and the programs of the youth program. We, I came here almost nine years ago. And in the nine years that I have been serving here as an associate minister, I have worked with nine different youth ministers. Now, that's not accurate because I was a youth minister for about six to eight months, so I'm counting myself, so eight. But the point is, this position has been a revolving door. And we have gotten, we've gotten college kid, college kid, you know, people in transitional positions. We have not taken the youth ministry as seriously as we should have. The youth ministry needs to be filled by an associate minister, someone who has a heart to be a minister to children. Not someone who, I mean, we've had amazing, amazing young people leading this group. But I also know of my wife. My wife is 50 years old and she's still teaching high schoolers. There is such thing as people who say, I am going to be a career minister and I am called to serve youth. And I've studied theology, and I've gotten a master's degree, and youth are important, and they don't deserve the scraps. This needs to be central and important for our church. Now, we are looking to bring in first an interim minister, and then I'm hoping for a co-minister so that we have a ministry team here at Jupiter First. But again, we're a congregational church. We will decide on the model that we're going to take for leadership in this church. But here's what's important. If we're going to bring in someone who is going to be a career youth minister, someone who is excellent and has a call to serve and develop kids' faith with their lives, right? Before we just rush off and hire another person, we want to have a team ready so that this person can be integrated into our team. But in the meantime, here's what we've done. We found a really good curriculum that is tied to the Revised Common Lectureary, which every Sunday, David and I and Marta, we gather and we plan the worship service based on the lectureary. We're all working with the same scriptures. And these are the scriptures that are being preached and studied in churches all over the world. And so the youth are getting a message, a lesson tied to the same subject that is being covered here. And we have, back when I started talking about nine years ago and nine different ministers, here's what stayed the same. We have had a dedicated team of youth leaders who have served and have been the rock in this program through all the transitions of youth directors. They are more qualified than they give themselves credit for. They are an absolutely amazing team. Again, I was the youth minister for maybe eight months or so in one of those transitions. And I worked with these people, and they were phenomenal. They've got material. They're going to have someone who can be sort of a quarterback with planning the activities and stuff. We are going to do just fine. And here's the thing, we are communicating with them regularly. Both David and Marta are there on Wednesday nights. David's doing music with them, Marta's helping in other areas, and I'm having regular conversations with them. The level of integration between the youth program and the other ministries of this church has never been deeper. So there are exciting things ahead. We're in the middle of COVID. Nothing is as it should be right now. But we are laying the foundation for something that is going to be healthy and deep. I think I've talked enough because we want to go home and eat dinner. Okay. Yes, a follow-up question? Let me think about how to answer that. Did they have similar reasons for leaving? I will say that I know that Tiago had peace about leaving. I will also say that Jed, who is a dear friend of mine, he was not very happy here, and he found it to be a difficult working environment. That's about all I can say, right? Before upsetting lawyers, right? Okay.
I just wanted to expand on the youth and children a little bit also. I grew up in Bradenton at a Baptist church. I raised Catholic, I ended up being Baptist. And the part of that group, it was so geared towards kids, throughout middle school, throughout high school. Every Wednesday night, I went to youth group. I was in the band, we had practice, we had the Wednesday night dinners. And I got to know everybody. A lot of my friends at that time were from church. And then Sunday, we meet, we do Sunday School, and then have the church. So and then every summer, we had a week-long summer camp at a Boy Scout ranch where Brother Bob was our pastor who kind of preached. So it was a really good experience. Fast forward, I'm a dad of now three kids, three girls, so I'm still here. So I was looking for a church for, when I saw a shirt that says, you can't scare me, I have three daughters. I need that shirt too. So I was looking for, this was where my wife grew up, in this church. And I wanted a church that was very geared towards kids. So I know they have a great youth ministry. Nancy Lout has done a wonderful job. Marta has exceeded expectations. She's been, especially the Sunday service, like someone commented, that was amazing. And I've told her that. So as far as the church council, about two years ago, we all participated in a survey. Of course, it was after the annual meeting where there was some problems. But we did a survey, and it showed this church is kind of dying. a survey, and it showed this church is kind of dying. It wasn't heading in the right direction. As council, and I believe staff, we did a book study with a book called Growing Young. And it's a green book, you can buy it on Amazon. Every council meeting, we studied a chapter for about 20, 30 minutes. It was a very enlightening book for me, as a parent, how does this church grow, like we were talking about, how to integrate. We want kids to enjoy church. Sometimes I went to church, and, "Oh, another Sunday, I gotta sit here." When I was little, we don't want kids to do that either. So I think everybody on council, we have a good demographics, we got parents, we have grandparents and everybody in between, so we thought that book was good. So as staff and council, we kind of realized how important it is to grow young, otherwise the church will not make it in the long run. And so, that's, this integration you guys have been doing has been very wonderful for all, especially as a parent for our kids, too.
Teresa, Teresa. Question?
So I have a two-part question. One is, can you share with us the balances in the reserve, restricted and undetermined account? And also, the second part is, how should the amount of package that's offered in the cabinet be in full, and we go off or have any obligations left on that?
Okay. So the question number one, first, were budget questions. On Sunday, at the annual meeting, we will go over, on overhead, the annual budget for the upcoming year. So I don't have, we weren't prepared for those numbers tonight, but they will be full-fledged for how much the budget for is for 2021, and including the reserves. So that's the question that will be answered in pure detail on Sunday. The one thing I can say is, we did, the annual budget every year has been January 1 to December 31st. For a few years, we've been talking about adjusting the budget fiscal year, and as of this year, the budget will be January 1 to November 30th, because December's a large revenue-producing month, and we wanted that at the beginning of the year, it was too hard to do the budget when it's at the end of the fiscal year. So that's question number one. The question number two, for Teresa, was, with Kevin's severance package, was it paid in full, were there any obligations? That is not able to be disclosed, but everything, everything there has been allotted for in the budget.
Teresa, do you have any more online to bring up?
I don't have anything in the question and answer section right now. No.
No? Okay.
So we got two bonus mini-chip sermons tonight. That was pretty cool. All right, I'll just go two more that we have here. One is, will Jupiter First Church ever go back to serving communion every Sunday? And maybe I'll look to you, Chip, on that one?
Sure. We're not, we're not ruling anything out these days. I want to advertise an opportunity to receive communion every week. In the Serenity Garden, David, we're going to say 6:30, right? At 6:30. So every Wednesday at 6:30 PM, David and I and Marta and everyone else, we are gathered in the Serenity Garden, and we are going to serve communion. So there is an opportunity to receive communion every week, no matter what it is that we decide to do on Sunday mornings.
Thank you, Chip. And for those of you who have been deacons, just wave your hand up in the air. How many of you have been deacons? Okay, see a number. Do you remember cutting up the bread into the little pieces? When my wife and I were doing that till 1 o'clock in the morning, we said, "Thank goodness we're going to once a month." So, anyway, once you start cutting up a lot of bread, you start realizing, hmm. Anyway, not to make light of it. There was another question, and maybe this is something, Rich, you've already kind of covered. There was a question saying, "I think I remember hearing, when Barry left, there was $500,000 in a discretionary fund. If this is correct, what happened to that money?" So should we defer that to the Sunday showing of the budget? Does that make sense, Teres and Rich?
I can answer that.
Okay, you want to do it?
Okay. Any other questions?
I think that was it, so I'm going to get off the stage.
All right. So one of the questions that came in was, when Pastor Barry was here, was there, there was a $500,000 discretionary account. On council for two years, we didn't know about that, so we did the research on that. And in 2017, there was a discretionary account for about $26,000, not $500,000. And at that time, that account was closed, and that $26,000 got transferred into the Jupiter First Reserve. And the reserve, I'm on the board of our condo as far as my work, and you have to have reserves, you can't, you have to have money in the background. When the air conditioners go out, when, if some major expenses occur, you got to have money saved, and reserves are earmarked. You have X number of dollars for air conditioners, X number of dollars for roof, X number of dollars for lighting. So that just went into the reserve budget earmarked for certain projects there. And then, as far as the budget in detail, the revenue and the expenses, that'll all be shown on Monday. Mike Harris, our treasurer of our church, will be helping present that with Teres, too.
I would express appreciation for the transparency, the emails that you send out in this. It's solid that you set up a system that people who left the church, I don't know how we identify, whether you identify those people, but I do appreciate that you set up a system that people could express features of coming back. Do we have any idea, knowing how many people are dissatisfied of certain things, and can actually express them, and use your blackies?
So the statement and the question, number one, the statement was, "I wanted to appreciate the transparency the council has had to the church." Last year, as we're doing the investigation, we weren't transparent at all, because as a council, we wanted the investigation to be as independent as possible, with no input from council, it was outside. So with all that, I can certainly understand mistrust with the council. What are these guys doing behind, not glass, but behind walls? So once that was all done, all of us completely agreed, we had to be, we had to have trust. You had to trust the council, you have to trust the staff. There's got to be trust for the church to grow. So immediately, as soon as we were able to, we decided to become more transparent. So we decided as a council, the staff, Teres puts out a monthly newsletter, what's happening with staff, we're putting out the council. I didn't even know the church had a council until I was asked to be on council two years ago, and I got to see a lot more, good and bad, but I got to see a lot more how the, I wanted to volunteer, I wanted to help out the church, and being on council has been, I want to say wonderful, but it's been good, it's been a learning experience. But I think, as, not knowing what council was, it's good that you guys can see the part that we were doing. We're working for us, we're working for our church, God's church here. So the question was, and one of the first and second letters that I sent out on the monthly minutes was, people have left the church, we've had a door to open up to for people that were dissatisfied before and wanted to come back. So you can click, "I want to renew my membership," or if you didn't leave, if you wanted to come back. I don't have those numbers, Teres, do you? And do you, we can maybe have it for Sunday for you, but do, have we seen people coming back, and do we have an estimate on that? We haven't looked at that.
Yeah, we haven't looked at that.
Okay. I think we may not have the numbers, but I think we can see on the Sunday services that now we're at two services and pretty much a full Easter service, that the services have been, we've seen some faces we haven't seen in a little while. So I think just by what we see in the congregation, we can say we are back to growing again.
Anecdotally, I will tell you that I have hugged a lot of people that I have not hugged in a long time. Once I knew it was okay, and that they were vaccinated, but I'm seeing a lot of old faces back, and it fills me with so much joy.
All right, so segue into growth. So last year was a very tough year health-wise, medical-wise, and financial-wise. The church has received, the revenue has always been past the bucket around, and your bucket, you feel obligated to put money in, you want to give money in. When there's not a bucket there, it's kind of hard to either mail, or it's actually very easy to donate online, but some people don't do that. So last year, pretty much every business, every church has had a financial downfall for that, including our church, too. So the council, or the, in my little mini-minutes I sent out, it kind of gives some big projects that we're looking for. We have air conditioners, we have playgrounds, we have a lot of stuff we want to do, and we need all of our support together. So as a council, and we've decided to have, and we missed the rummage sales, we missed like bake sales and all these things. So we've had a volunteer, Joanne Seaway, come forward and say, "I would like to help the mission of our church for fundraising." So we got a lot of projects, and in one meeting, I think they met for a year behind the scenes what they came up in one meeting, but I'd like to ask Joanne to come up and talk about what she has presented for our church for fundraising, too. Okay, Joanne?
I'm going to make this fast, so Chip can go home and have supper. All right, so the model this year for our campaign, and our group is called the Fellowship and Financial Committee, because we're putting emphasis on fellowship. But our model this year is yes, 2021. You're going to recognize it, we've used it before, it's got the fish with the big fish with the big yes in it. The team members, some of them are here, I'd like for them to stand as I call their name. My team members are Bob Davis, Steve Woodcock, Steve Woodcock, stand up, Steve Forrest, Mark Hataway, Vicki Brunner is here, Carolyn Christmas is on the team, Mickey Fish, Laurel Brown. It's a great team so far. It's going to be in a two-part, this campaign. The first part is going to be a letter sent out to all of the congregation, as well as congregational friends. In that letter, we're going to tell them that we've been given a $10,000 anonymous donation, which is being given as a match dollar donation. So if any of you give a dollar, that dollar will be matched out of the $10,000, and the person who's giving this will go up to the $10,000. So we're asking that you either bump up the pledge that you've already made, or if you haven't made a pledge, if you will give, make a new pledge for this year. So that's part one, and the chairman for that is Bob Davis. The second part of the campaign is a fellowship event, where we're going to sell tickets to all events. You're going to receive a calendar within a week's time, hopefully, of what we've got planned, the dates on it, so you can put them on your calendar, and we're hoping you're coming to all of them. So we're going to kick off with a Jupiter First t-shirt sale. Those shirts are going to be available at every project that we do in this campaign. The second thing that we're going to do is, we're going to have a fellowship dinner once a month, on the third Wednesday of each month, and excluding August and December, Christmas comes in December, we don't do that. And our chairman for that is Steve Woodcock, Steve, wave or something. And, you know, all of you know how wonderful a cook he is. Then, that, so that's every month. Starting then, again, in May, we're going to have a rummage sale, that's next month, by the way. And then, we're going to do a Music Under the Stars, that date is to be announced. We're going to do a Pumpkin Patch Craft Festival in October, and that's going to include a pumpkin patch, where you can buy pumpkins, a petting area where your children can pet the pets, a bake sale, we're going to ask you ladies to bake your famous cookies, a plant sale, where we're going to actually sell plants, that the gardeners for God are going to get together for us, and we're going to have a cafeteria, and then we're going to have, because of the wonderful work that Steve Forrest has already started, vendors all over the campus. So we're planning on only having the parking, the east parking lot open, the rest of the campus, we're planning on having vendors or some kind of thing going on to the campus. It's going to be exciting. Gosh, guys, we should be jumping up and down at this point. So, okay. And in that, it's Steve Forrest who's doing the overall, he's doing the overall Pumpkin Patch, Laurel Brown, and Vicki, Vicki Brunner is over here, she, they're in charge of the plant sale with the gardeners for God. Then we're going to do a Joy of Christmas luncheon in December, and that's where, remember, we have all of our tables set up with different people's dishes, and every, all of us love that. And we'll have a really nice speaker, we're hoping to have an author from a famous book. In April, we're going to be doing our auction. Now, that, again, should be bringing all kinds of cheers. And finally, on our plan right now is to do a Mother's Day tea, not a lunch, but a tea in May. So going back to the rummage sale, we're off and running. Next Wednesday will be the first day that we'll accept donations, please, no clothes unless they're baby clothes. And then after that, we're going to accept anything that you bring us. There'll be in that informational letter that's coming out, it will tell you who to call if you need to pick up a furniture, and yes, we want your furniture. And then also, next Wednesday is going to be our first meeting, and, oh, I'm sorry, the drop-off will be between 9:00 and noon, and then right after that, at 1:00, will be our first informational meeting, and that's where we hope to start putting all of our volunteers together. Please call if you'd like to volunteer for any of the things that I just said. And I just want to thank the council, because this is a great honor, I feel, that they've provided, not only to me, but I know my committee feels the same way, so thank you, and they've done a wonderful job. Thank you again.
I agree with everything that Chip said about including the youth and about what we need in a youth minister. We have had that in Tiago. Could you please read his resignation letter, so we can hear his reasons for leaving? As a former high school leader at JFC, for 10 years, that have seen several of the youth ministers from the past, I have firsthand knowledge that Tiago's everything Chip is saying and more. It doesn't make sense that he would have left when he was such a perfect fit. Please be transparent with us. Then it says, "Tiago was not included from the very beginning in all the ministers' meetings with Chip, David, and Marta. In addition, Tiago asked his youth volunteers to teach on Sunday mornings, because he was told that he was not allowed to teach to students on Sunday mornings. Why would this be? Transparency, please."
I do not have access to Tiago's resignation letter. As to including Tiago in the ministers' team, I don't know how to kindly say, that is just simply not accurate. We included Tiago in our weekly ministers' meetings. We discussed the lectureary text for the week, we talked about ways that Tiago could integrate that message into his weekly message, and we made every effort to mentor and include Tiago in the ministry team. And I was very sad when Tiago sent in his resignation. He did say that he had peace about this decision, and I wish him well and miss him and wish that, wish that he could have stayed on board. But we made every effort to include him in planning and ministry. David?
The day that he told us that he was transitioning out of Jupiter First Church, I asked him point-blank, "Is there any way we can keep you? Can we talk you out of this?" And he said, "No." So.
Chip, before you come down?
Yes.
Could you please clarify the days and the hours for communion?
Very good. So what's written down right now as far as days and hours for communion is Wednesdays at 6:00 PM. We are going to change what is written down to 6:30, because David is helping to lead the music with the youth program, and he's finding it a little difficult to prepare for the youth program and get to communion at, in the prayer garden. But yes, 6:30 PM on Wednesdays in the Engel Serenity Garden, unless it's raining, and if it's raining, in the North Ex. That's all I have to say.
I guess it's following up to what Chip and David just said. Tiago told...Tiago directly told his youth volunteers these things, "Your representation is not transparent."
I think we should invite them to conversation. Yeah?
Can I say something about that? Were they saying that they never seen, that they didn't see Tiago involved in the Sunday ministry? I never saw a minister of a youth group here as much as I saw Tiago. That kid was up here every week. How did they think he wasn't part of it? He has reasons to be up here.
I just have to say something about this.
Tiago is an awesome guy. I loved him above a lot of people in here, I hate to say, but his enthusiasm, I'm sorry, people, his enthusiasm, his love for the kids, his love for God touched me every time I saw that guy up here. But he was here every Sunday that these guys were here. And he stood up on the stage, and he said his part, and he stood up for those kids and what he believed in. And if he had a reason for leaving, then that was up to him. We didn't want him to go, I know a lot of people didn't want him to go, but who are we to tell him where he belongs? He's following what he believes for whatever reason it is. And if he got told by David and Chip, "What can we do to make you stay?", and he couldn't do it, don't you know it broke his heart? I believe it did. I believe he felt this church was awesome, but you know what, sometimes we're torn. Sometimes so much traumatic stuff goes on that you just got to say, "I'm done," whatever it is. And I'm sorry, I mean, it touches me because I love the guy, I thought he was awesome for here, and I wish he didn't have to leave. But you know what, respect his reason. You know what, it's his decision. I guess that's it, I'm sorry. Sorry. I sat down by myself because I volunteered to work for him, and he approved of that, and I asked him myself, you know, "We really want to see you stay." And he said, "It's just my heart and my mind."
If I may add, in 2020, Tiago probably participated in worship more than Pastor Chip.
It would be nice if she could say what she said for the online audience because they didn't hear you.
And when we talk, we got to be in a microphone, everybody here can hear, but the people online, the people online can't hear what the questions are.
Same thing with the online people, they're making statements, they can hear who they are and what they're saying. So their names should be written when they make a statement online about what happened. I asked Tiago myself personally, I worked with him, I thought he was a phenomenal young man. I've never had anyone quickly come up, thank my husband, come back up later, send a note, very appreciative. We worked with him on about four or five projects. And I asked him, and he said, "You know, I just don't really know where I need to be right now, but I just need to take that time for myself." So I think he had an opportunity, and I think if people online have information, they need to share that openly and identify who they are. But I can only tell you what Tiago told me.
Thank you so much for sharing that. I think the important thing is Tiago conveyed the message that he wanted to convey to the parties that he wanted to convey that message to. And so he may have shared different information with different people, but I can tell you 100% that Tiago felt very much at peace with his decision. And to add another layer of that, some of you guys don't know, I went to Bible college, I studied children's ministry, I have a bachelor's degree in children's ministry. I met my husband at a Bible college, he's, don't tell anybody, two years younger than me, so he knew what he was getting himself into marrying somebody who was already working as a children's minister. And this is our life career, but I have to tell you that every single decision that we have made along the way, whether it was finishing my degree every church where I have worked, every class I have taken, I'm taking seminary classes to benefit this church family. I'm doing all of these things not just with my own decisions and my own interests, I'm making those decisions with the interests of my husband as well. And so one of the other things that I think I am able to say tonight is that Tiago and his wife Rachel both felt at peace at this decision. And what God has joined together, it's not our place to step into the middle and try to cause division within their marriage. So since they both feel at peace with this decision, we're sad. I mean, like, it really stinks. I hate that I'm starting over because I hand fifth graders off as new sixth graders every single year, and I have handed them off to a new person every year I have been here. That breaks my heart. But we cannot argue with what Tiago believes God was calling him to do, and we certainly cannot step in between what Tiago and Rachel have decided together as a married couple who are adults.
And being on council last year, we saw a lot of issues between staff, and where does the staff go? The staff is the heart of our church, hard-working people, Teres, Marta, Pastor Chip, David, there's a bunch of people that, they are the heart and soul of the church. They keep their church going, we're here on Sundays, they're here seven days a week. So if you have disruption or problems with staff, where does the staff go? As a council, in the first meeting of the year, January 5th, we realized we have to have someplace that they can go, and an independent place. So on January 5th, we reformed a personnel committee. There's five people in the committee, two people from council, three from the congregation, and one of those people on there is a psychologist, and I believe they're in Stephen Ministries too. So we have a place, if any staff member, any minister, anybody that works here, they can go to this, the people, and if they're not happy, they can come to council. So we, as a council, we are there for our staff, for our ministers, and hoping that 2021 will continue to move forward in a healthy, working environment for everybody here. Just so you know, we're working on that, and we have that.
I wanted to say one thing, am I on? That comment apparently was, I mean, no name, right? A no name for that comment? Somebody who...there was a name? There was a name attached to it. Oh, I assumed it was under a no name. Okay, my wrong assumption, because I was going to say that. Anybody who genuinely cared about Tiago wouldn't be making statements like that. I mean, that was waving a flag to fight, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. I don't think there's...was there? I don't want to talk anymore. Come on.
No, I just have a question. I don't need to make a statement, I just have a question. That's totally different. When the council redid the bylaws and reestablished what it meant to be a member, there were certain criteria now that you had to meet to be a member. And as far as my memory serves, the council had the ability, the council had the ability to remove those people that did not qualify. Has the council done that in preparation for the meeting on Sunday? Who can vote, who cannot vote, what is a member, who can ask questions, who cannot ask questions, et cetera? Thank you.
So yes, the bylaws were rewritten end of 2019 and voted and approved upon council, the congregation annual meeting 2020. Included in that, the new bylaws, there are criteria for becoming a member, remaining a member, and those are all spelled out in the bylaws. And Jim is our bylaw president. But yes, to answer the question, as far as the meeting, any pledging member that qualifies has been invited to the meeting and is allowed to vote, and everybody that is, has met that has been thoroughly vetted by the staff here, by Suzie, Teres, and the staff there has been vetted.
So what about members of the council that resigned that are not...I mean, how does that work?
So if anybody resigned and they're not a member, whether they're on council or congregation, if they're no longer a pledging member, they will not be able to vote. And we did extend that deadline, it's usually December 31st, we did extend that to February, end of February 28th. Does that answer the question there? Okay. So we gave every opportunity to anybody that wants to vote, and the only vote, it's mainly a discussion, the only thing we are voting on this meeting, we're not voting on UCC, we are voting on, there are 12 names for the committee members of the nominating committee, and we have to select six of those 12, and only vetted pledging members of the church are able to vote. And after the meeting, the vote will be counted. You have the ability to vote, and I put my public source announcement, you can vote online, you could vote and drop off, there are deadlines, and then even on the annual meeting, you can even drop off your vote at the annual meeting too.
Yes, the deadline for voting online is Saturday.
Okay, so for those of you out there, the voting for the online ends on Saturday. Any other more questions, and I'll close. Okay, one more question?
We've heard a lot of discussion about an authoritative minister or leader of the church. This is not the norm. If you look around, most churches have a senior pastor, and the system works very well. I had a conversation with my brother, who's been a minister now for over 45 years, and asked him about this concept of co-pastors. And his comment was, "I have never seen co-pastor situation work out very well, that someone needed to be in charge to be the senior pastor." We have a man sitting up here who we have watched for nine years, who has shown us leadership, has shown us compassion, and I would certainly hope that Chip is being considered as a senior pastor for this church. And I think that if you canvass this congregation, you'll find that there is a tremendous amount of support for that idea. Thank you.
Thank you very...that's a wonderful comment, and I agree with everything you say. The concept of a senior minister or co-ministers, those are just thoughts. When we went through all this, I met with Chip, David, and Marta before the January 5th meeting, and everything's on the table. This is not my decision, this is not Chip's decision, this is a congregational decision. So first step, what do we do? We don't have a senior minister come January 1. Chip and I spoke, and if I'm saying something incorrect, correct me, he requests an interim minister. He needs a chance to heal, to get through this, and so that's why we're going to have interim minister in place. We'll kind of step back, let the dust settle, and then we can kind of come back forward. And if, as a congregation, with the input of the ministers and the staff, however Chip, David, however we want to go forward, however the congregation wants to go forward, we can do that. This is not council decision, council input, it's all of our decisions to go forward. If Pastor Chip wants to, if we decide to go to a senior minister route and Pastor Chip wants to put his name in, absolutely, I don't think that would be a problem whatsoever. Right now, that is not on the table. Right now, on the table is, according to the council and the ministers, is to have an interim minister in place to let the dust settle, and then we can kind of come out of the dust like a phoenix. Does that sound right? Okay. Okay. So I wanted to let you know again, thank you very much for coming online and in person as council chair, as council, as ministers. We have emails on our website, we are transparent, we are open, we love these questions, and so we, please feel free to continue asking questions. You can email in to info@jupitiferchurch, you have council@jupitiferchurch.org. And again, segue, a PSA, we have our annual meeting, this Sunday, we have two services at 9:30 and 11:00. At 1:00 is our annual meeting. It did get pushed back, generally it's in January, we pushed it back so we wanted to try and figure out, we want it to be as organized as possible and discuss the UCC. So the meeting will include a discussion of the new deacons, the new council members, and the vote for the nominating committee. And a big part of that will be Reverend John Verdingen will be up here discussing UCC to answer questions. And again, remind, there is no vote, it's just an informational, and as Lynn said, it's probably a couple of months before we even come to a vote, but it's an informational. So in person, streaming, online, we are here for you. And then if you have any questions after meeting, I'll be happy to answer, and online you can email us too. Thank you, everybody. So I'm going to ask Pastor Chip to come over here and close in prayer. And did you want to say anything, David? Do you want to say anything before Chip?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Pastor Chip.
Thank you. Let's do a quick closing prayer. Lord, send us out in your power, in your love, and your peace. We ask these things in the power of your Holy Spirit and in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.